Hey, Paulding County. I'm Timber Christopher, Development Coordinator with Paulding County Water, and I'm here to show you how to fix a faulty flapper. Faulty flappers are the number one cause for toilet leaks, which can cause your water bill to go up extremely high, and a lot of times you won't even know it until you get the bill. If you're unsure if you have a faulty flapper, I'm going to give you a simple trick to test that out. We recommend you take anything that's going to discolor the water in the tank of your toilet. You can use Coke, coffee, tea, food coloring, or here at Paulding County Water, we have dye tablets on hand, free to our customers. Just stop by and pick up a pack. So to test that out, you're going to take whatever you've chosen to discolor the water and just drop it in the tank of your toilet. Wait about 10 minutes and you should see that color leak through to the bowl of your tank if you have a leak. Once you've discovered that you have a faulty flapper, the first thing you're going to want to do is turn this water off at the base of your toilet. Then you can just flush to get all the water out of the tank. Something to note is that not all flappers are the same size. You need to make sure that you get the flapper that is correct for your toilet. And to do that, you can take a picture of the inside of your toilet and take that with you to the hardware store, or you can measure the diameter of the drain pipe where your flapper goes, and that'll make sure that you get the correct sized flapper to ensure that proper seal and prevent those leaks. Next, we can replace the flapper. The flapper is attached. Just some little hooks on the peg of the overflow valve. We're just going to gently press that up and pop those off. You can unhook the flapper from the arm, and then you can throw away your faulty flapper. So here's our new flapper. You can see the hooks that are going to hook onto the pegs of that overflow valve. You can just line it up, gently press those hooks down on those pegs. Reattach the chain to this flush arm, and make sure you have proper slack. If the slack is too tight, then water's going to continue to leak into the bowl of your toilet. If it's too loose, it may kind of float up and not get that proper seal. Once you have your new flapper installed, it's time to turn the water back on at the base of your toilet and let that tank fill up. And that's it. And remember, if you have any questions or concerns, we here at Paulding County Water are always here to help.
School safety is on everyone's mind these days, and even a simple comment to a friend can cause fear and confusion. When you're talking with your friends online, at school, or even on the school bus, don't make comments about weapons or threats to school safety. If you make verbal threats or talk about bringing weapons to school, joking or not, you will face serious consequences. Be smart. Don't do it. It's no joke.
Hey, guys. If I could get you to settle down, let me please, and remain seated in the back.
Sick of this place, man. I'm probably going to shoot it up to you.
I was just planning on wearing this dress that I got.
Base two, this is Bus 16. I have got an emergency.
The words you use are incredibly important. Think before you speak. If you make a threat, whether serious or not, you can cause great harm to others and Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke. School safety is on everyone's mind.
If you overhear a threat against our school or any students or staff, reporting it right away is crucial. It's your responsibility. It doesn't matter how it was intended. School threats are no joke. Don't pass it along and don't spread rumors. Report it to a teacher, an administrator, or a school safety officer. Report it.
They better not come to school more.
If you see or hear something, then say something to an adult. Your action can make a huge difference to help keep our schools safe. Threats against public schools are a serious crime.
Today couldn't have turned out any better. This is our 21st year of hosting this event. All of our vendors showed up. We have great representation from throughout the county, local businesses, and we have some new vendors from outside of the county who wanted to be a part of the event. The weather's been nice, and we have one of the largest turnouts that we've ever had, so today's been a great success. Just want to give a huge thank you to all of our vendors, all of our public safety people that came out. We have great representation today from public safety, our county departments, really the public for coming out today and spending a little time with us. This is our largest event of the spring, and the rest of our county staff that has volunteered to come out today and help us out.
Welcome to Mulberry Rock Park, located on the south side of Paulding County, Georgia. This park offers scenic walking trails, a great playground for children to enjoy, multipurpose fields, and plenty of outdoor recreational activities. With amenities like our enclosed pavilion, multipurpose fields, and three miles of scenic pedestrian trails, Mulberry Rock Park provides the perfect backdrop for your outdoor adventures. Explore our community garden, let the kids unleash their imagination at the playground, or gather with friends and family at one of our five group pavilions for a memorable day in nature. Embrace the tranquility of Mulberry Rock Park as you stroll along the pedestrian trails or enjoy a picnic at one of our single-table shelters. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration office at 770-445-8065. Mulberry Rock Park, where every moment is an opportunity to connect with nature and create cherished memories.
Sandy Caker, I'm filling in for our Chairman, Tim Estes, today. I would like to welcome everybody. And do we have any elected officials? I see Ashley Henson, our Sheriff, Doris Devie, Hiram City Council. Am I missing anybody? Thank you all for coming. I would like to ask everybody to please turn off all your mobile devices. And Marshall, if you will, please bring forward the sign-in sheet. Thank you. And I'm going to ask Jason Phillips if he would do our invocation and pledge. Would everybody stand if they're able?
Dear Lord, we just come to you now, and once again, this gathering of this Board of Commissioners and staff and the public, Lord, we just pray for your divine guidance. Holy Spirit be in this room and lay upon our hearts and lay upon our minds the right thing to do in the various issues and situations that we'll take up on this agenda. Lord, help us to make Paulding County a better place. Help us to know how to best run this county from a government standpoint, Lord. We thank you for the honor and the privilege to be able to have the opportunity to try to affect things that are, that make our world, make Paulding County, a better place. We ask for your protection. We ask for the protection as we continue to grow to our, for our first responders, whether they be fire, medical, or law enforcement, that you protect these lives as they head into the unknown and face the situations that nobody could seem to have get solved before law enforcement and the others arrived. We pray for their divine protection and the continuing safety of those that they are responding to, that we could get through a situation peaceably and with a good result on the other end. Lord, we thank you for being with them when that's not going to happen. Watch over them and protect them. Lord, be with us again in this meeting. Help us to do your will. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The May 27, 2025 Work Session Minutes and the May 27, 2025 Board Meeting Minutes are available for your review. Under announcements, we have Team Paulding Employee of the Month, Eric Wolf, with the Water and Sewer Department.
We're here today to celebrate Employee of the Month, Eric Wolf. Well, Eric just embodies what Paulding County stands for, just collaboration, teamwork. He's innovative, he's forward-thinking, and he's just a team player. I went to Mr. Wolf about doing some training in the reservoir. His immediate response was, "Do you have the boat with you? We can put it in the water right now and do some training." I knew right then that he was a team player, he was ready to help us out in anything we needed. I just want to say thank you for being who you are, man. Thank you for all the teamwork, all the collaboration, everything you've given to us, allowed us to do over there. He's an awesome guy.
Eric Wolf, we appreciate you. Tabitha Pollard, County Manager, to make an announcement on the 2026 budget availability.
Thank you. We have, we've published the budget on June 2 this year, and so it is out for review. We would like, you can access it on the website. It's on the front page. There's a link to the 2026 budget. We will hold the public hearing, I believe it's July 22, at the last meeting in July, and adopt the August 12, or the first meeting in August.
Invited guests, we have none. We'll go with the bid awards. Discuss action to award the FY 2025 computer purchase to the lowest responsive bidder, BitDirect Inc., in the amount of $287,196.08. Ms. Goldin?
Good morning. On April 17, 2025, Purchasing advertised the FY 2025 computer purchase. This is the annual purchase of Lenovo-branded computer, laptops, hardware, and Surface tablets. These replace existing hardware that are at end-of-life. We received 13 bids. Both IT and purchasing reviewed the bids, and we're recommending award to BitDirect Inc. in the amount of $287,196.08. And Will's available if you have any technical questions.
Any questions? Everybody good? Okay, we'll go to bid number three. Discuss action to award the purchase of a Midland SPR6 self-propelled road widener from Reynolds Warren Equipment Company in the amount of $192,547.50. Funding will be allocated from the FY 2025 Paulding County DOT General Fund Budget. Mr. Jones?
Good morning. Included in the FY 25 budget is a capital purchase Paulding DOT requested and received funding to purchase a portable road widener. This piece of equipment be used by our maintenance division for the purpose of constructing paved shoulders, gravel shoulders, fill, and repair edge ruts on roads. This piece of equipment will replace a 1986 Midland Widener attachment, a quote from Reynolds Warren. Equipment company was received for a Midland SPR6 self-propelled road widener in the amount of $192,547.50. This price reflects the discount under the Georgia State contract pricing. If approved, funding for this purchase will be allocated from the approved FY 25 General Fund capital purchase budget.
Questions, comments? Everybody good? Okay, we'll move to the next item. Number four. Discuss action to award the 2025 Asphalt Project Contract Four Crumb Ground Tire Rubber Modified Asphalt to the lowest responsive bidder, Bartow Paving Company, Inc., in the Funding for the project will be from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources grant, which is $96,500. With the remaining balance allocated from SPOST, roads are located in Commission Post Three. Mr. Jones?
Probably add a little backup. At the February 11, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, a grant agreement between Paulding County DOT and the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division, EPD, was authorized by the Chairman the amount of $96,500 to use a crumb rubber additive ground-up rubber tires to add to asphalt mix in order to promote environmentally sound construction practices. DOT selected two roads in Post Three, Angham Road and Arnold Road, to use this product and determine if the benefits of crumb rubber would make it a viable product in the future to use on county roads. Paulding Finance Department advertised the DOT's contract, known as the FY 25 Asphalt Project Contract Four Crumb Ground Rubber Modified Asphalt contract, include 2.36 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and ground tire rubber modified plant mix resurfacing on two county roads. Five bids for the project received and opened on May 23, 2025. PC DOT has reviewed the five bids and recommends awarding to the lowest reliable bidder, Bartow Paving Company, an amount of $1,110,590.27. The low bid was 8.5% lower than the county estimate in studies. Crumb rubber has been shown, when added to asphalt, to improve the rutting resistance, fatigue cracking, and increasing the durability of roads, essentially giving a longer life of that pavement. Also, essentially, you're taking a product that has a, takes a long time to deteriorate, taking it out of landfills and using it on roads, so essentially kind of reducing that the amount of tires in landfills, which is a good thing. The DNR grant covers only the cost of the crumb rubber in mixing, adding rubber to the asphalt. That's it. So that's where the $96,500 came from. If approved, again, like you said, funding will be allocated from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources grant, the amount of $96,500, and the remaining will be allocated from SPOST. And again, roads scheduled in the contract are Arnold Road and Angham Lane, Angham Road and Arnold Lane in Commission Post Three.
Questions, comments? Everybody good? Okay, reports from committees and departments. DOT regarding Safe Streets Study.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Regan Hammond. She's with VHB. She and her team put together the first county comprehensive safety action plan, which is going to be a great plan for us to move forward, to identify areas in the county that we can target, you know, some high crash and fatality locations, and try and have a much safer and streets for our community.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone this morning, and thank you for having me. Let me get the... Great. So as Erica mentioned, I'm here to talk about briefly the county's Comprehensive Safety Action Plan that we've been underway with for about a year now, and give you a high-level summary. So, what is a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan? Really, what it is, is it's a targeted strategy to help guide the county and its transportation partners to help really focus on reducing the overall number of traffic crashes across the county, but really targeting and focusing in on fatal and serious injury crashes. And I think that really hits close to everybody's heart and home, because we all know somebody who's been involved in some type of traffic crash, and in many cases, we know people who've been seriously injured or killed. So this is a really great tool to help the county impact individual lives and the entire community by working to reduce serious injuries and fatalities. Now, the county received a Federal Highway Administration grant called Safe Streets and Roads for All to conduct this plan. And under that grant, there are kind of eight core components that are required. One is a leadership commitment, and I know that you'll be talking about that later on in the agenda today, but also having a planning structure or a committee to guide the planning process. And we had a technical steering committee that met a number of times over the course of this plan's development. Conducting safety analysis, we did a lot of that. Engaging in... Conducting safety analysis, we did a lot of that, engaging and collaborating with stakeholders and the public, looking at the needs of those traditionally disadvantaged and underserved communities, is that equity piece there. Taking a look at not only infrastructure projects, but what are the complementary policy and process changes that can go along with it, having projects and strategies, and then ultimately looking ahead and to be able to track your progress and be transparent with the public. So we've achieved all of those through this planning effort, so you can check that box as far as meeting your Federal Highway Administration grant. We followed the safe systems approach, which is a kind of leading-edge philosophy and practice around safety planning and infrastructure implementation, which really takes our traditional approach, which was very reactive, looking at past crashes, and takes it forward into the future to try and be more proactive so that we're preventing those crashes rather than reacting to them, so. So a quick, high-level summary of that safety analysis that we did. So we did look back in the past, and we looked at the most recent set of five-year data that was available, so that was 2019 through 2023, and in Paulding County, there were a little over 22,000 crashes across the county of all types. But 93 of those were fatal crashes, and 376 had a serious injury involved. And those are the types of crashes that we're really targeting with this plan, are those fatal and serious injury. I do want to note that 17 of those crashes involved persons who were either walking or bicycling as well. Now, we went in and we took a deep dive on the data, and we really tried to understand what were those crash types or contributing factors that were specific to those fatal and serious injury crashes? And the kind of five key factors or crash types that we identified were head-on crashes, single-vehicle crashes, so you can think of those as a run off the road and maybe hit a tree or something like that, crashes involving speeding, crashes involving left angles, so those taking a left turn, and then crashes that happened at night in not-lighted areas, so dark-not-lighted crashes. So those five types of crashes were the most prominent types when a fatal or serious injury crash happened. We also looked at the demographics, who was being involved in crashes, and overrepresented across all crashes and all drivers were that men and older drivers were more likely to be involved in a fatal or serious injury crash. Oh, and then the map on the right there, that's our hotspot map, so you can look at that, where it's a darker red or yellow is where we have a larger proportion of crashes happening in the county. And not surprisingly, these are on your most driven roads across the county.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
On that male and female thing, was there any indication given of like who drives more often? You know, like more hours behind the wheel?
Not in that-
Are they really just that bad of a driver? They do need us to tell them how to drive, right?
That is a really good question, Commissioner Galloway. It's not in that data that we looked at, but we could look at another data set to look at total driving in Paulding County and see if we could pull out those stats. That's something we can definitely look into.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. I would suspect that probably men and women are pretty equal in the driving, but from an impact of fatal and serious injury crashes, it being with older adults, that is honestly not that surprising and consistent with trends across the region. You just lose some of that quick thinking and response and, as you get older. I know I've been experiencing that, too.
Can I ask a question as well?
Yeah, go.
Some of those areas, some of those intersections have currently been under heavy construction. Was that taken into consideration as well?
So this data set, we looked at the most recent five years that's available to us. After it gets processed and cleaned, you know, the law enforcement reports it to a state database, it goes in there, it gets processed a little bit, comes out, it gets processed a little bit more to make sure it's accurate. So 2023 was the most recent year that was available to us, so, you know, like State Route 92, south of 278, that had not been started yet, the construction, in a significant way, when this data set was available. So you may see a little bit of change, particularly on State Route 92, as you evaluate in future years, the results of those widenings or other intersection projects that happen. They may, you may see those hotspot bubbles change a little bit. So, taking into consideration all the crashes, that's what that hotspot map was on the previous slide. Now we're really looking at what we call our high injury network that we identified. And the high injury network really are those roadways and intersections that we're seeing a higher proportion of fatal and serious injury crashes on. And the purpose of this high injury network is to really help us focus, where can we get the most bang for our buck on making improvements that help reduce those fatal and serious injury crashes? And you can see the two maps, one showing roadway segments, the other showing intersections, that's your high injury network in Paulding County. And again, this aligns, in most cases, with your most heavily driven and traversed roadways. Those in red are kind of that top 5%, and those in yellow are that top 10%. And you can see, US 278 dominates, but that's your most heavily driven and largest roadway in the county, but some of the other larger state routes, as well as Bill Caruth Parkway and Nebo Road. And of all those fatal and serious injury crashes, 95% of them happen on 5% of your roadways. So that really gives you an indication of focus in on these corridors, and you can hopefully make a big impact. So that was looking backwards at past crash data, but as I mentioned, the safe systems approach really encourages transportation agencies and local governments to be looking proactively to try and prevent future crashes. So we take a look at all that data, and we have, look at the characteristics of what are those roadways looking like, what are the, how are people using them, and in particular, those that we see higher crashes on, and what are those common characteristics? And then we build a model, and we ultimately spit out a risk assessment for all of the roadways in Paulding County. And those roads that have those characteristics that you see on the left, anything from higher traffic volumes to a greater number of through lanes or higher speeds, those are going to be your higher-risk corridors based on the trends that we've seen. And so now we have an indication of, you know, where you can focus on preventing future crashes as well, because they are deemed risky. And so we indicated those from roadway segments, intersections, as well as which roadways in the county are higher risk for bicycle and pedestrian modes, also known as active Taking into account demographics, we took a look at the relationship of that high injury network to some of your more historically disadvantaged or underserved communities, so this could be in relation to senior populations, zero-car households, low income, et cetera, non-native English speakers. And we try to understand, you know, are communities where we see higher concentrations of those populations being disproportionately impacted by crashes? And what we found is that the area, what we're encouraging Paulding County to take into consideration is that there are certain areas of the county that may have higher proportions of those populations, and in relation to that high injury network, as you're looking to solve the issues, take into consideration those unique characteristics of those communities. For example, you may have a higher proportion of folks who bicycle and walk in certain areas of the county, say southeastern Paulding or around the cities of Dallas and Hiram. Those are areas where you might want to look at different types of treatments and countermeasures that are also helpful to facilitate biking and walking safely, so. So we wanted to make sure we look at who this may be impacting. We conducted quite a bit of community engagement as part of this process. As I mentioned, we had our technical steering committee, we had two public open houses with complementary online engagement to go with those in-person events. We conducted a focus group, attended the Touch a Truck event a couple months ago, had a website, et cetera, also did a community survey. A lot of the feedback that we heard from the community through all of these engagement opportunities were very consistent with what the data was sharing with us, so that was good. And there was a lot of support for focusing in on safety and for a lot of the types of improvements that we're recommending. So, developing recommendations, we focused in on four recommendation types. Site-specific, so specific roadway stretches and intersections. Systemic, so applications that could be applied across the entire roadway network in Paulding County. Strategies focused on biking and walking, also known as active transportation, and then policy and programmatic strategies. So we had 66 total site-specific recommendations, so specific intersections or stretches of road in the plan. And ultimately, we, also I should note, Dallas, City of Dallas, 23 of those locations are in the City of Dallas, and 14 are in the City of Hiram. And we also, in identifying those recommendations, noting that US 278 is your problem child, but that's a GDOT-owned roadway, so encouraging the county on US 278 as well as other state routes to focus in on some of these high injury network corridors, high-risk corridors, so 278, State Route 61 and State Route 6 business, but also Bill Caruth Parkway, which is one of your locally-owned roads, is, got five kind of corridor segments to focus in on and five intersections there. Those systemic strategies, these are kind of like your toolkit of things that you can pull out anytime you're working on a roadway project, whether it's a repaving project or another more massive type of intersection or roadway widening. Pulling in those six strategies that are on the right, things like flashing beacons and warning devices, delineating your curves a little bit better, lighting improvements, those can be applied in any project that the county is working on to hopefully improve the safety for those who are driving and walking and biking. So we, and that is really based on the data analysis. These are the types of measures that are proven to have an impact on reducing the types of crashes that you're seeing in Paulding County. From a bicycle pedestrian standpoint, where we focused in on wasn't necessarily individual locations on roads and intersections, but more generalized areas for a focus on walking and biking safety around schools, no surprise there, at your greenway trail crossings, so right in and around the Silver Comet Trail and other greenways and trails that you have in the community, around your areas that are considered community destinations, you know, here at the Watson Government Complex, and other public locations like libraries, community centers, et cetera. And then subdivision entrances popped up. We heard from the community, there's a lot of interest, and people enjoy walking and biking around their individual subdivisions, but then once they get out onto the main road, that's where they meet the safety challenge, so helping improve conditions at those subdivision entrances were good. And on the left are those kind of toolbox of solutions that could be applied at these locations. From a program and policy recommendations, I'm just going to summarize these at the top line here. We had strategies focused on coordination with your partners, coordinating with your land use and zoning, so coordinating with community development, and really trying to drive home those strategies that are also articulated in your comprehensive plan that supports safety. You're conducting education and outreach in the community, tracking that progress through inventory and evaluation, working with law enforcement on improved strategies, and we were really pleased that the law enforcement agencies here in Paulding County were really great participants in this study and gave us a lot of good feedback. And there was a lot of interest in one of those strategies around just improving training around crash reporting in the county can help improve the data that you get and then the ability to make change. Continuing to conduct planning and additional studies to refine recommendations, and then we also put in some motorized cart regulation recommendations into the plan. There is a growing interest, you know, in golf cart use in the community, and we wanted to make sure we address that. So, how do we focus this? We prioritize those 66 kind of roadway segments and intersections into kind of a focus for the county to start picking away at. Many of these locations are recommended for improvements that are low-hanging fruit, you know, quick to implement, lower cost. Those are located in the red lines and points on the map. And then the county has a number of projects already planned and on the books through your SPOS program or through your comprehensive transportation plan that are kind of in that midterm timeframe. And so we've highlighted those locations in yellow as opportunities to integrate some improvements related to safety that we've made recommendations for in those locations. So we think this is a good starting point for the county to really target that high injury network in the near term for some improvements, and coordinate with the Georgia Department of Transportation on many of these, because they are on state routes. And there's just the list of those locations. And then finally, what's this, going back to that first requirement of the grant that you all received around a leadership commitment, we did some, crunched some numbers, and looking at how the county could make some impact, if you commit to just a 5% annual reduction goal in fatal and serious injury crashes, you can by 2050 achieve up to a 76% fewer deaths on your roadways by 2050. So should the county want to make a commitment today to a reduction goal, there's a way we can track that progress and show how it really makes an impact to individuals in this community. So with that, I'll take any remaining questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. I mean, we're so overrepresented in Post 3 in this lovely map that you put up, but since so many of them are on GDOT property, so to speak, do they automatically get a copy of this, is this shared with them already? I mean, what's their-
So representatives from Georgia Department of Transportation District 6 that you work with specifically, as well as headquarters, participated in the study, so they were part of our steering committee, technical steering committee. But yes, so we're sharing this plan with them, they will be also implementation partners in it as well. So the recommendations in here will help them identify improvements that they can integrate into their work program.
And is this whole set of slides up on our website? Does anybody know?
We, not yet.
Not yet. Could we do that? Because I think the public needs to see this, so that men will know that we need to tell them how to drive. Just kidding. But no, seriously, just to be, you know, raise some awareness of where the trouble spots are, maybe they can be a little more careful.
And the study had its website, so as we've moved along the way, we've shared the results, so there's all of our analysis reports and things like that are on the project website, and we'll be adding the final documentation in this executive summary as well.
Great, thank you.
This may be more of a George question. Can this information be used for grant request through the state for additional- Can this information be used for grant request through the state for additional state assistance in funding these projects?
Absolutely. And that was one of the goals of the study, was to complete this so we could be eligible for more grant funding.
Yeah, there's a specific pot of money in the bipartisan infrastructure bill for implementation of these plans, but it also is a great opportunity for coordinating with GDOT on other federal and state funds that are available for safety specifically.
Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was a pleasure to work with you all again.
Okay, we are at public participation on agenda items, and we have Tyler Isby. Am I pronouncing that right?
I'm just talking about the transfer station.
And he will be speaking about the transfer station?
Yes, I may be the only person in the county that is excited about this transfer station. Our family owns A-1 waste and roll-off. We're the second-largest roll-off Paulding County business here. And I'm also a Seven Hills resident, and so it's twofold. A, I would love to be able to drive up and down Seven Hills Boulevard on Saturdays to relieve the traffic there. And then on a business side, it would be phenomenal for us to have another transfer station, especially in a business district in Hiram, you know, for our family business. Right now, several of the loads are either having to go to Cobb or Douglas or other areas. And so it would be, again, we're very excited about this possibility because, again, some of the major projects we've done here, whether it was the Target a couple of years ago to other things, it's a big deal. So like I said, it's a twofold. As a resident, it is great to, you know, get some relief up north, but then also to be able to do this. And I think, again, I'm not sure all the facts on it, but it sounds like with CWS running it, that it should be a moneymaker for the county, you know, to be able to get the money coming in. So it sounds like a win-win-win, so.
It's much needed.
Is much needed. So, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Consent agenda, consideration of the following consent agenda items. Accept the listed street for perpetual maintenance by the county. Legacy Point, Phase 3A. Legacy Point, Phase 3B. Legacy Point, Phase 3C. And you have the roadways listed on your agenda that would be in the back. Declare the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through sale, auction, trade, or donation. And these are also on the agenda, so I won't read through those, but I would love to have one of those Kawasaki motorcycles. Number seven is authorize the chairman to execute a permanent sewer easement and temporary construction easement to Summerlin Homes LLC for the price of $500. Would anybody like to move any of these items to new business? I don't see any. So old business, we have none. New business. Number eight, discuss action to approve the contract with Capital Waste Services LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a transfer station located at Reynolds Road. Ms. Lippman?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present this, and thank you, Mr. Erby, for your support on this and kind of stealing my thunder. I'm here to present the contract with Capital Waste Services to construct the transfer station at Reynolds Road. The county purchased this property for $990,000 in 2021. And in the fall of 2024, we issued an RFP for a company to lease the premises and operate a transfer station. Capital Waste Services was selected to locate the transfer station here, and this contract outlines the construction, operation, and management of the solid waste transfer station. CWS will construct it, they will operate it, and they will manage it. This will be a service for our residents. This will take some relief off of the Seven Hills transfer station and give people an opportunity in a much more industrial location. And it is also, we will get a host fee. So the more trash they collect, the more funds we will get. This is a 20-year contract, but we did put in a provision that in five years, we can reevaluate the host fee. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about the contract and Bruce Coles here, and if he has any technical questions. But I think it's pretty simple. They're going to bring trash and they're going to give us money for how much they trash they bring in.
Any questions?
I don't really have this as a question, but I do want to just point out this is a transfer station, not a dump.
This is correct. The trash will be coming in.
The people of post three in Hiram to understand.
And then it will be going out.
That's right. It comes and then it goes.
Capital Waste had to provide documentation as to where the landfill that this will be. So it will be coming in and going out only.
And assuming this moves forward, what's the timeline of when it opens?
We hope that once the contract goes, that they'll be open in 2026. Right, Bruce? Yeah. It's, the construction will be, we took a tour. Commissioner Galloway and Bruce and myself went to one of their sites outside of Chattanooga. I mean, it's, I don't think it'll take that much construction. They'll probably bring in prefabricated buildings and hopefully up probably in the first quarter of 2026, but we'll definitely keep you updated on the when.
Those buffers, they look skinny on here, but they're not really that skinny, are they?
No, they're not.
Give us an idea of how big those buffers are because we do want to surround the surrounding people to not be unhappy with their new neighbor.
Definitely on the south and east side, they're at least 50 feet, Bruce? 50 to 75 feet? And there's a stream on the top portion, so that'll be state and county stream buffers and impervious setbacks. So on that north side, that'll provide a great buffer so that, Reynolds Road is an industrial area, so there are some residences in the area, but we think those buffers will keep it quiet as possible.
Great, thank you.
Okay, number nine, discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into task order number two for the engineering services master agreement with Atlas Technical Consultants LLC for the Paulding County Stormwater Department for Stormwater Support Services in the amount of $415,446 through June 30, 2026. The agreement will be funded with general funds. Mr. Jones?
The stormwater, the county stormwater department is responsible for stormwater in county subdivisions, both the open drainage and closed drainage systems, with the amount of subdivisions, stormwater infrastructure in place, lifespan of materials in the stormwater systems, and the workload for stormwater maintenance, which is currently housed under Paulding DOT. We're expected to remain constant with this workload in the near future with numerous design and repair, replacement stormwater projects ongoing and to be programmed. We have historically and currently been unable to fill open engineer positions in DOT and stormwater. On May 28, 2024, the Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman to enter into an engineering services master agreement with Atlas Technical Consultants for stormwater design inspection services in the amount of $199,946.60 with a contract and date of December 31, 2024. A supplemental agreement was issued to extend the time through June 30, 2025 or until funds were expended. The county has a need to continue the support of the stormwater engineering and construction services and inspections within the Atlas Technical, within the engineering services master agreement for stormwater support. The contract authorizes Atlas Technical Consultants to serve as a support engineer for Paulding County Department of Transportation for a duration up to 36 months at the discretion of the county. Since Atlas Technical Consultants have been supporting Paulding County, a stormwater unit price contract has been executed to help streamline the process to bid and award stormwater projects. Since that time, multiple projects have moved in the construction phase, expediting project delivery. We've been satisfied with the work with Atlas Technical that they provided, the level of service and personnel, and we generally agree that'd be beneficial to continue this contract. The estimated cost to extend the contract for another fiscal year until June 30, 2026 would be $415,446.0. This price includes a 3% increase in salary for personnel and also includes additional funds for survey crews, additional engineering and design, and staff support. These additional funds are only billed if used. If there's no need for them, they will not be billed. So essentially, we're requesting the chairman to enter into a task order number two for the engineering services master agreement with Atlas Technical Consultants for the Paulding County Stormwater Department for Stormwater Support Services in the amount of $415,446 through June 30, 2026. If approved, work performed on this agreement will be funded through the general fund.
Questions, comments?
Is this already budgeted anyway? Is it already in our budget for DOT or for stormwater?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Number 10, discuss action to authorize the notice to proceed with the Northeast Loop Transition Main Project and approve the increase to the guaranteed maximum price of $699,546.08 for a total price not to exceed $16,670,81.08, funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund. The project is in post one and post four. Mr. Wooten?
Good morning. The Richland Creek currently supplies 2/3 of the water for all the county. The Transmission Main will allow us to basically use 100% of water, so it will be entirely on Paulding water. The original design went cross-country. We ran into some major condemnations with major commercial properties, which caused us to then change and go down Harmony Grove Church Road. With the change, that was the first change, the GMP, and part of the thought going down Harmony Grove Church Road was the use of hangers and just basically hanging the water main on the bridge. We are currently ongoing building. When we looked at the crossing on the bridge, then we got with Georgia's engineers and the engineers for John D. Stevens. And through looking at safety factors, looking at the original bridge design, the consensus was that to meet the safety factors that the designers of the bridge wanted, we could not hang it on the bridge. So now we need to turn around and look at putting it adjacent to the bridge but boring under the creek roughly about 25 feet in the ground and then bring it back up to be on the side of the road. This change from what was proposed in the last GMP is an increase of $667,146.08. And in order to complete the project, we would like to ask for this increase to go ahead and join the two sections we're building together. And like I said, currently, we are building in both directions, and this also has a cost to pay for the additional structural work that was not used. So we are asking for the board to approve an increase of $699,546.08 from the Renewal Extension Fund. The other funds were entirely from ARPA, which is the American Relief and Protection Act, I believe is. Are there any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Wooten.
Okay, thank you.
Number 11, discuss action to adopt Resolution 2025-16 to commit to a safety goal of zero traffic crash-related deaths and serious injuries, and to adopt a goal of 5% annual reduction target for fatal and serious injuries due to traffic crashes on public roads in Paulding County. Mr. Jones?
All right, it'll take me about a half hour to go through this, so. No, I'm just kidding. I'll give you a little bit of backup, though. The bipartisan infrastructure law, BIL, establishes Safe Streets for All SS4A Grant Program to Improve Roadway Safety by Significantly Reducing or Eliminating Roadway Fatalities and/or Serious Crashes. Discretionary funding on this program is appropriated through the U.S. Department of Transportation, US DOT, to provide federal funding for two types of grants. The first one is planning and demonstration grants, which are used to develop an action plan, complete supplemental action plan activities, or to carry out demonstration activities. The second is implementation grants used to implement strategies or projects identified in an existing action plan. The purpose of the SS4A Grant Program is to improve roadway safety by significantly reducing fatal and serious injury crashes. To be eligible for the SS4A Grant Fund programming, the county must have a safety action plan in place. Paulding County applied for and was awarded funding for a Safe Streets for All SS4A grant previously, $160,000 from the US DOT, $40,000 county match. On March 12, 2024, the Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman to enter in an agreement with VHB for the development of a safety action plan on roads within Paulding County in the amount of $200,000. Between 2019 and 2023, 93 people lost their lives and 376 people were severely injured on roadways in Paulding County. The Comprehensive Action Plan provides a comprehensive plan to support the long-term goal of eliminating traffic-related fatalities and serious injury crashes. The Comprehensive Safety Action Plan identifies systemic and location-specific safety needs and a range of strategies for addressing these needs through a combination of infrastructure improvements, policies, and other strategies. This represents a step towards reaching the targeted safety goals of zero deaths and zero serious injury crashes. Paulding County Safety Action Plan is required to meet several criteria to be considered Safe Streets for All SS4A compliant. One eligibility criterion includes the county publicly commit to an eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injury crashes, including setting one or more targets to achieve significant declines in roadway fatalities and serious injury crashes. To satisfy this criterion, we prepared a draft resolution to adopt a goal of 5% annual reduction for serious injury and fatal crashes on county roads to be considered for adoption by the Board of Commissioners. One thing Commissioner Galloway, you'd asked earlier about the safety action plan and being posted on a website. One of the criterion for the safety action plan for counties and cities, it has to be available on a publicly available website. Currently, it's on the, we have a specific, you know, website for the project itself. Obviously, when that goes away, we would put that on the county website, so that will be taken care of at some point.
Questions?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the conclusion of regular business. We have no public participation on non-agenda items. Do we have any announcements or comments from the board? No announcements, Virginia? Come on.
I can think of some.
I can think of some. I will say that I appreciate the county allowing me to go to Washington, DC last week to represent Paulding County. A number of commissioners were there from all over Georgia and we met with several cabinet members and people that worked for cabinet members, and I think it was a very productive time. And some of you department heads, I may have news for you that I learned up there, so I'll get with you in that case. But I took a lot of notes and, you know, nobody loves nerding out on policy for about four hours in a row like me. And then after I did that, I went and met with Marjorie Taylor Greene's Chief of Staff and talked with them about this issue of corporate takeover of our rental homes. And so I was taught a long time ago, don't bring me a problem without a solution. So I bought them a problem and a solution and we'll see where that goes. I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Ashley and your team in public safety for the Glow Run this past Saturday night. I think the turnout for supposedly rainy night that turned out very well was good. And thank you for continuing to do this for the county. I think it brings in quite a bit. The community gets involved and it's a good outcome, so thank you to everybody that participated. And I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.